Discussion, if not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question carries. Now, we're in order for a motion for the minutes Monday, August first, twenty twenty two.
I thought they read well, I'll make a motion in prudent minutes.
There's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Close, question carries. Alright, first item on the agenda is the Dedham Cemetery Funding Request. Good morning, um, do you want to introduce yourselves real quick so everybody knows? Stephanie Houseman.
Uh, Rick Ruggel. Scott Johnson. Gene Miners.
And then that's Courtney. Sorry, I'm not sure I talked to on the phone to set this up. So take it away.
Okay, I'm Judy Ankenbauer and this is Marianne Palmer. And we're here today because our cemetery is, and it's a location that's like over a hundred thirty years old. And as far as I know, there are no perpetual movements on doing anything that way. I do know that you guys do, where the veterans have some kind of arrangement. Uh, it started out as kind of an independent cemetery in eighteen ninety-two, got moved from that location. Moved it over in eighteen ninety-three there. By nineteen forty-one, the original people who are the pioneers of, of the area. And passed away or the families and generations of them. And the city of Dedham then acquired it. And since it was outside of the limit, the new township also became. And since then. But we are quite concerned because there's a lot of. These pictures are better than words.
Sure, you can pass it around anywhere.
Okay, the pictures are there, um, this part is, we had talked to a conservator guy that comes around and fixes things. And we got just kind of a rough estimate on some of the stones and that, and some of the pictures correspond with. Like I said, the pictures will show more of our issues than anything. Most of the stones that we're concerned about date back into the eighteen and even that. So we did speak briefly with our trustees. And they referred us to you guys. Not sure. But, um. That's why we're here is to see if there's any kind of funding or any avenue to go to, to get this project. But right now, it's, it's very disrespectful to the people. There are no families to contact. They're either buried there or blown on. So we can't, those towns have to distribute that, but there's only one property.
Well, first of all, the funding that you get for the veteran cemeteries, township, the vet- let's just. Which is a part of us, but it's, but that's true of veteran.
It's just the mowing. It's just for mowing, yeah.
And what is mean, what's your definition of that?
Mowing, mowing, just mowing, yeah. Mowing or trimming or.
So you, you think it is a township?
Yes, it's called the Dedham, some, it's city Dedham, city of Dedham Cemetery in town. So the city of Dedham must own the ground. Well, like I said, since it's outside of the city of Dedham.
So is there any?
Well, the city of Dedham owns the ground.
But you said it shows the city owns it.
Yeah, when I looked it up, the city owns the ground.
Church has part of it and the city has part of it.
Well.
But if the township trustees oversee part of it, they can levy. In their budget for cemetery and the city of Dedham should be able to levy in their budget as well. They own the ground.
Most likely. I would imagine the owner of the ground is.
Because with some of the issues, like a huge stone fell over last year. That's a really scary story. And if had someone could, who could have been walking by or even been mowing. If that were the favor. Well, there are liability issues on the leaning stones that we're concerned with. And if we can nip some of these now, before they fall, it's less costly and less considered if they break.
So from the VA perspective, they can ask, go to the VA. The VA is only gonna maintain graves that are veterans. Okay, and then they could levy through the city is what you're saying? I've said the city and possibly the township should be able to levy.
If that's a joint venture between the city and the township, they'd have to look back and see how it's set up.
I would think there's, would be a twenty eighty or something.
Or some type of memorandum, something to tie that together.
Cause the board of supervisors ourselves does not.
We don't levy to. That's why I mean, we're wondering why they suggested.
And, and you know, it's probably because a situation like this hasn't happened in for a long time, so nobody really knows the direct.
Does Newton have a cemetery? They don't have one, other than that. They have, they have some like, isn't, uh. Isn't there other cemeteries in Newton Township though?
There would be them, thirty cemetery, a pioneer cemetery, and I think we have to make an expense and we need. It's kind of before you cross the rack. Um, it's not.
Oh, yeah, I know. By the camera.
But the, the, these stones you're talking about, that's an issue in a lot of, a lot of the cemeteries. I know a couple of years ago in town, some of the guys went around, they reset them as well as it could. Did themselves, that's a big, big problem.
And we, the ones like. Occasionally they'll knock something out. And we'll go in and so far they've been free and some of them, we were one. Once that bond is open. And a lot of the stones are multi-layered, so every layer leaves and it's just that much more.
Well, you have a very noble cause because there isn't a cemetery over when you, that I have leaning fallen. They're all the same and they're all falling, I know the same flight.
No, not in the last two years.
It's sad to see them losing all parts, a lot of history in there.
So I wonder, what are, what are we gonna recommend going to the city?
Well, I think that between the city and if there's, probably the first thing you establish to, if the township has got anything to do with. Would you say, Courtney?
Wow, yeah, cause according to what I found, like it doesn't, just the city that owns it.
And I think this city.
debating, have a rating.
Uh, just send him on the mayor, he needs something to do.
Wouldn't be nice if.
Here's the heading on one of our old maps, trying to update that so we know, that's the heading for the.
City of Dedham, new township.
Yeah, both entities, if that's.
And they don't have to levy for all of it right away, I mean.
So, so who pays for the mowing now?
The city mowing?
Yeah.
Or is it church mowing?
And I think maybe the trustees maybe keep them on that, I don't know.
Well, if they're both doing it, I would say then they're both entitled, according to what you're saying here. I would say they both should, could levy for it.
And how do you do that?
Well, when they make their budget up, which would be, uh, next June.
The first day after the first year.
Something like that. But I would, I would contact the city mayor and then I would contact E D Huffman, who's the township.
We sat in on a trustee meeting, that's when they suggested we come here. But they, they weren't sure how to proceed, they said that.
So they probably did.
They probably never levied for a cemetery.
Yeah, they probably don't know they have the ability to.
And then they got, they got by too cheap all these years.
Yeah.
But I was talking to Charles Parker for Biola Cemetery. And he was on the, you know, like he, he won a trustee. And they redid their cemetery, it's absolutely beautiful, it took them three, four years. But he said to them, they levy and.
And, and all those pictures that you showed, they're gonna be able to fix those off, is that, what was it, twelve thousand?
Yeah, then that's just a few of the stones, but no.
Okay, I was gonna say.
This was just kind of like.
Are the highlight ones the veterans or is that?
No, they are just the, um, more.
There are ten Civil War veterans buried there, one of which is our great great grandmother.
So there may, there may be, um, Veterans Affairs dollars for.
For those graves.
And it could be for those graves.
So, um. Tony Elits is the Veterans Affairs Director. So you could get in touch with her and see if there's money available.
She'll be familiar with what programs there are. If, if there's any.
I talked to her once about, you know, the, uh, the whole lollipop series that the memorials. That we are very huge in our side. And she said they've been passed so backward.
All the medallions. Actually, it's through that too. Well, it'd help. I would suggest you go back to your city and the trustees and have them have a joint meeting. Hammer this out, I think they both got the ability, according to this, if this is the way it is. They both have the ability to levy to their projects.
Now, in order to have a special meeting, you have to wait until they have a regular one.
I see, if you can, you'll have it at a regular meeting or request one, I'd like.
They just have to give the public a certain notice that there's gonna be a.
Probably forty-eight hour notes.
And you can do a special meeting. And you may have to anyway, if you're gonna bring both entities together.
I know when we've talked to the trustees, they have. Maybe they had.
Yeah, so that's what we would recommend, go back and talk to them and make sure that they realize they, they are able to levy, both entities are. And then talk to Tanya, the, Tanya, the VA, and she's over in the fricky building, okay.
And if they have a problem about how to do that levy, then you need to go to court and she can nail them. Cause she also has those budgets get turned into orders, so.
I can let them know what the limit, levy limit is and let them know how much.
You know how much that limit is, there's a max.
I don't know, there's a max levy total. I'd have to look and see what they levy for, for their fire protection. Cause if they're at their max on the fire protection, they would have to lower the fire protection side of it. To levy for the cemetery and that may cause problems. Fire retention, so we just have to see.
So that the entity, two entities are, it's total, that's the max, okay. So, so, um, an individual who lives in the city of Dedham, would he get taxed? For both levies? Just the city.
Township would be on the.
Okay.
The only way that would happen is if you're farm brown. With any, that's with anything, so, yeah.
But. And if they had the ability to do it, I would think they could probably generate quite a bit of money that first year. I mean, if you're, if you're looking at doing a project before that you might have to find some, some, uh, somebody to carry the load until you get the money from the taxes.
We, we don't, if, you know, we never agree with, you know, while we're done. It's always stone, won't be there.
Hopefully this helps you a little bit, sorry, it's. Gives you a little bit more direction, but sometimes one of the things that haven't happened in such a long time, people don't really know, it takes a minute to figure it out, but.
But, and I think probably there's a good possibility both those entities aren't aware that they can levy for, to the cemetery levy for, they've never done it, so. That's why I like pushed on him to give something.
Well, they could also talk with, I don't, I mean, just because I know the city of Carroll. Obviously has a very large cemetery, so they could talk to Laura Schaefer, who's the city clerk in Carroll for. You know, find out how they knew it or, you know.
Gina are just discussing sort of, I, I think, can wrap this as a city part of their cemetery also, so the city clerk chair would be able to help with Jessica. I believe they have a.
That may be a joint cemetery too.
That could be a joint one there, that could be. And the city has the other.
Mount Manning is, they've got a city cemetery too.
When I, when I looked at it. For Arcadian. You and I looked at those letters, and I think even township has the largest levy. Cause I think they have the most township cemeteries. They just have one.
They just, they just more cheaper than.
Well, I think their, their levy is like forty-eight hundred dollars. So. That's when they start their budget processes in January and then it'll come due the July first.
Another problem is finding someone to continue to work.
Yes, that's the next.
Yeah, we found this guy and he.
Masonary people are on the line.
Hopefully that helps, yeah, some direction.
We had to push it down. But they had, they had the ability to raise the money for it.
I don't think we even have the option to levy, yeah, we don't, I don't think we have it at all.
So the earliest possible date, we can have money next June, or July.
Um, unless one of those entities chose to amend their current budget, like, let's say they have some money sitting in reserves that they'd like to. They could amend their budget and then be able to do it. But I don't know what the reserves are like or how much money they might set around.
Or if they wanted to advance it.
In the form of, yeah, they would still.
Replenish your money with tax dollars.
Yeah, they could, they could like, yeah, borrow instead.
I like said, one of our concerns, but there wouldn't be liable on that, since it's probably dead for the area. That would look amazing for both to, want to make sure. There's some people who wander around.
I'm sure somebody's got the liability insurance.
Thank you.
Well, anytime, I mean, I'm sorry, we can't help.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks a lot, thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is secondary roads utility permit. Morning, Zach.
So this one is for. Greatitelphone or West Island Networks, however you wanna look at it. Um, really what this one is, is the. Kind of a phase two or continuation of the one we did this spring. I didn't bring the full set of plans, obviously, but, uh, as you can see from the map that I sent you guys, that the area in green. Are all the areas that they're essentially adding on to from the original. Um, quite a few more miles. The process is the same, basically, they're gonna be boring underneath all of the culverts, known tile lines, bridges, all those things. Um, and then plowing the rest of it in the shoulder of the road. Um, depending on. Where other existing utilities are, that's the, the biggest concern probably is, there's some areas, especially if you get, uh. South and west of Carroll, probably not too much of the green areas, but areas you're dealing with an orange, it's very. Very, uh. Busy. Um, there's places where there's. Six, seven utilities already in the road and there's. Not much.
The orange that has, that, is that all been completed?
No, they're working on it right now, they, they got a slow start, um. As everything else, they had a hard time getting fiber. Physically getting the, the, the material.
So one of the yellow areas.
The yellow, yellow is like orange, it's just, yeah, different highlighter that they went without, well. So, um, but, but their process is the same, um, they have a gentleman, uh, that. Inspector with the company that designed the, the plans. Uh, that's out. Watching them as well as the, as a, have a head of the contractor, MPs doing, doing the work. Um, they have some sub that do different things as well, but, uh. Uh, overall, it's been really well, good working with them so far, they've been trying to. Look ahead to make sure they're not missing culverts and things like that, so. It sounds like their intent is to try to get both of these all the way complete yet this year, before the snow flies. Um, we'll, we'll see how, how things go. I don't know how many crews that they'll add, additional crews or whatnot, they've done a lot of boring. They've done some filing, they had a lot of boring, been done.
Are they going down seventy-one in some areas too?
Um, probably.
Yeah, you can see, see place some.
I think so, cause I remember seeing permit, I, I didn't know exactly where the, um, west on thirty-two. I know they were working west of thirty last week. West on moving. But it's, it's a, it's a good thing, I mean, it's gonna get a good fiber to a lot of people in the county and.
Some places have lots of fiber.
Too much.
Four or five of them.
And, and this is the, I mean, not that there's bad fiber or bad reason to have fiber, but this is the stuff that's serving the public, and it's a good reason. So.
Do they have any more questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the utility permit.
Don't move.
I'll second.
It's been a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
No, that doesn't say how many miles you're.
I do not know how many miles.
But it's throughout the county.
Yep.
Motion carries.
That's really all I have today.
Get out of here before you spend any money. Cover that up, be sure to.
Just for you, Rich.
Alright, thank you, Zach. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the Carroll County Recorder's Report, quarter of the report. Alright, we should get, we got the quarterly and the fiscal year report here. Um, so the quarterly. Compared to last year, not a lot of changes. Decent amount of less mortgages, I guess we're filed all that refinancing with the interest rates going down last year. And then on the state portion of that. He's higher in revenue stance, obviously sales have been higher, less, so everything's gonna. Check different price right now. Um, on the fiscal year, very similarly, similar overall. We've seen some reflection in that mortgage whenever one was refinancing. Um, other than that, we've been quite busy, we've had some new legislation changes that took place starting July one. One that you guys are now familiar with is the. House file twenty-one thirty, which was the off-road vehicles that Governor Reynolds signed. Not allowed for the highway vehicles to be operated on Iowa roads. I did print ops on. DNR. Provided someone frequently asked questions. In case someone would approach you guys, I just made some extra copies to help answer. That, but some of the big points are, the DNR must, sticker must be displayed on the vehicle, they must be at least eighteen. They must carry proof of insurance and they cannot exceed thirty-five miles per hour on the roads. And I believe there's a part in there that says, let's try to take the most direct route. So I think, I don't think the intent is for people to just be driving all over in their off-road vehicles, it's just to make it consistent across the state. Because it was, it was inconsistent, fire.
Can cities override this?
Uh, cities have their, can still have their own, but counties cannot, yes. So it's, city ordinances are still in effect.
So our county ordinance is not, is not in effect anymore?
Just overrides it.
Well, I mean, that was just so that they could.
We'll be looking at our ball ordinances, you know, we've been there, agreed so many years, so that may be one that we just. So since having anything. And then another big code change that we had, legislative change that we had this session was. House file twenty-three forty-three, which will be IBA code five fifty-eight point six nine regarding. The submission of the groundwater hazard statements. They made some edits to that, where there's supposed to be new language written on the deed. Whether there is, or is new groundwater, we've been working closely with the attorneys, helping to. Educating, work with them to make sure that the submission has been smoothed and. Of course, the first couple of weeks were bumpy as we all learned together, but it's smoothed out now. So. Is there any questions? So does this mean? Dean, you might know this, now with this new law, this twenty-one thirty. Can UTV still around swam lane?
I don't think so, I think. Yeah, yeah. I think that's. I can check with Jason tonight, but I'm on this.
That's a good question.
So they have to, Kinkover thirty-five has to be registered with the DOT, there's not a fee to that. DNR, and there's not a fee to that?
There is a fee.
Oh, there is, okay, yeah.
And then there's always, it's not a new fee, it's just the same fee that it's always been.
And then insurance.
Insurance must be at least eighteen, I think prior to this, some, when it was just. County roads, I think it was sixteen, if you know, that's right, and so I think, you know, some kids helped their parents farm and that was causing some issues, but. It is eighteen.
And then I assumed they'd have like blinkers and headlights and.
There is portions in there, it does say if there's questions as far as what the road rule required to check with the DOT, but it is, everything's through the DNR. As far as lights and that.
And, and do you, um. Issue those?
Yes.
Have you seen an influx of those?
Not necessarily, a lot of questions.
Regarding the new legislation, but I think. We had a county legislation that allowed it to drive already, so anyone who wanted to ride on the county roads, was, you know, we're already doing it. Look, people register their stuff anyway, unless they don't take it off their property. You don't have to register your vehicle if you don't take it off the property, otherwise you have to, and that was prior to this, anyway.
Well, I, I see a lot of groups.
Like a ranger riding or.
Yeah, right.
And this just changed, you know, a month ago, so that doesn't mean that people won't come up with some fun event.
But I mean, they're definitely exceeding thirty five mile an hour.
Well, it seems kind of dangerous to me to be on the state highway going thirty five mile an hour, but yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think, I don't know.
You can though, or you know. County roads, even county roads, thirty five seems. So.
Okay. Things roll on.
Yeah. So. At least that's all I get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
We have the motion quarterly and fiscal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is to approve. I'm seeing that's rich, Bruce.
We're just splitting off a little piece out of there. See, there's eleven acres, right?
Yep. There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Great. Next item is to prove pending expenses.
That was in what township? Let's go good. Jasper, right? But sure. Jasper. This good. It's good. Someday I'm not here to understand.
Cause I'd rather have time to take a look at the payables.
What'd you say?
Everybody had time to look at the payables. It's actually relatively low.
It's a real light one. I'll make a motion if there are no questions.
I'm second.
There's been a motion in a second. The expenses. Any more questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Alright. Did everybody have time to just try to read over this? This is the discuss ISAC human trafficking coalition. There's really enough that goes along with this. Um, ISAC has joined its, um. More of a. Learn something, do something type thing. So we were just registered Carroll County as. You know, we're behind it, uh, as far as learning more about combating human trafficking. You know, there's two spots here where you can go and get more information, um. I think it'd be good, we'd, we'd sign the letter of support for this.
Well, there's a proclamation.
Oh yeah, there is a, there is an official proclamation, but.
And news, if you want to do that, I'd just say we do the proclamation as well.
It's gonna get your guys' input on it. Courtney can take a look at that. We have to do that.
Yeah, find that and then put it on the agenda for next week. I'll have to, I'm guessing if I can go on and get it, I'll see if the change.
Yeah, it's got, who's at the bottom of that? Mission. I just wanted to bring it to this.
We do have it on the agenda. We need to approve. The proclamation and I can. Make that change.
So, you guys.
Well, I think it is a big issue.
I think it's better than what people realize.
You know, I think it'd be only wise that we. Say go on the proclamation.
It's not a good thing.
And I think the nice side wants to be wherever it is also. Make a motion that we move it to the next week and then. Have it read and signed by the chair.
Second.
Alright, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. She's gonna update the proclamation and then next week we'll do a signature. Yeah. Alright, the next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty two dash zero one two acceptance of real. Real property. And this is the same thing that Dean brought to the board about. Carroll County Conservation receiving some land.
The old Carroll thing.
And then there's. A copy of the abstract of.
But we did receive the warranty deed. That's ready to be reported once this, once this resolution has passed. So. So I don't find nice.
John's looked at it.
And he's looked at the resolution and had made a few changes for his recommendations.
I'll make a resi, make a motion that we approve the resolution twenty twenty two twelve.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. It's welcome. Yes.
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 Johnson.
Yes.
Players.
Yes.
Well, that's going around. I'll, I'll update you guys with any more management. Delta Fork, section thirty three, Arcadia Township, no changes. Laver Engraving Site. Section thirty four, Pleasant Valley Township, no changes. Dennis and Bill Venami Livestock Farm, section twenty five, Weetland Township, no change. Joey Shown, section twenty nine, Jasper Township, no change. Justin Schrader, section thirty three, Weetland Township, no change. AE Fork LLC, section thirty two. Maple River Township, no changes. Stone Path, three updated soil test and P indexes. And then the Carston Site, section twenty seven, Weetland Township. Change prep rotation or optimum meals and used manure analysis. Near two committee reports of anybody else to go.
Sure, I can go first. Last week we had CADC Ethan Pitts from. Iowa Development Corporation, which is a group that's, uh, put together by the telephones and also, um, power, like the. No, like the pull ups. And he give a presentation on what they can do and what they do is, you know, try to help, uh, put packages together for financing and. And put the whole package here, so it makes the projects go forward. And then last week I had several phone calls and there was also a call in regard to the tower and I. I was kind of busy at times, so I sent. For you and then I did get an email short, little one month from a guy by the name of Arthur. I do remember that. Said our lease is up again? It's not. Yeah.
Solicitation.
So that kind of fair. Uh, so and then this week I have, um. Rob Sands saying, uh, uh, Tuesday, and also policy conscious.
I can go next. Last week on Tuesday I had, um, foster grandparents RSVP. Tomorrow morning I have. Landfill Executive Monthly Meeting and Rob Sands tomorrow morning at ten thirty.
I can go next. I, uh, last week I had no official business, uh, several phone calls. But this week I have Conservation Board meeting tonight. That's my week.
Last week I attended the CADC with Gene and he gave a report on that, so no sense of covering that. I had nothing else last week. Upcoming this weekend, region twelve on Thursday.
Alright, last week I didn't have any official meetings. Um, we did have an email go around and I'll know more about it, um, after next week's meeting, but the daycare did receive. Another grant for child stabilization and a hundred and fifty six thousand. Three hundred and seventy four dollars. So that's for the Carroll area daycare. Obviously, when we have our board meeting, we'll talk and discuss more with that. Um, this week I have Wesco tonight and Dennis and and then on Thursday I will begin Des Moines for the twenty twenty three legislative committee meeting. Learn that. I don't have anything else for the week. Jordan. Next week. Nothing right now. Looks like you might have a plan. Bring you back next week. Dalton, is there any comments online?
That's a negative.
Thank you. But a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries for turn. Thank you.